You drive me crazy. Drive me insane. Insane, I tell you.
Oh, you're taking them, you're taking them down.
I was gonna put it on the new business, but, but given the client... Do you know it's against the law for you to approach Commissioner Tapp? I'm robotic.
All of Education meeting is hereby convened. Please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Brennan.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Evans.
May I have a point of personal privilege, please?
A point of personal privilege is granted.
I would ask that all of my colleagues join me down by the podium with the exception of President Garcia and former President Shirley Thompson. This is their last meeting today and we want to give a short presentation down at the podium.
Corrus line.
First off, I, all of us on the board probably really appreciate the service that board members provide. I know that after four years, this is not an easy job. The amount of time it takes away from your families, the amount of time it takes away from your job at times is sometimes daunting. It's not easy to serve on the Board of Education. And Commissioner Thompson, who has served for eight years, she said eight is enough after that. And President Garcia, who has served with distinction and honor for four years. So we have two plaques on behalf of the Board of Education. One to President Domingo Garcia and to Shirley Thompson. I'm gonna ask Commissioner Elliott to present the plaque to President Garcia. They've come a long way over... I can tell you from my first dealings with them over the past two years and has really developed a strong relationship. And they're gonna miss each other. So I'll ask Commissioner Elliott to present this one and then I will present Commissioner Thompson.
You know, as you all know, we didn't get along. You know, I thought he was too procedural minded and missed the point of the spirit of the law and the spirit of the intent. And, you know, we've had some battles and you know, we both are pretty strong minded when it comes to our positions. But it never was personal for me. Never has been personal. And this is about our children. I think that in terms of his presidency, he kept it in order, a little bit more than I would have liked. But he kept it in order. He has been an asset to this community. He probably doesn't know, but I remember him from the fight organization and when he was at our Bureau of American Action League. I remember when he was with Franklin Florence and Minister Scott and David Gant and all the people that helped to make our community a better community for all of us. They fought for this. They fought on the line. And so it gives me great pleasure to be in the fight with President Garcia and to probably about 30 years, at least 35 years for me and certainly longer for President Garcia to continue this work on behalf of this community and now on behalf of our children. And so I would like to say to President Garcia, Mr. Domingo Garcia, thank you from the board and from the district in grateful recognition and appreciation of the leadership and dedication you provided the Rochester Board of Education from 2004 through 2007. And it gives me great pleasure to give you this.
I want to thank my colleagues, the board commissioners, the board members for having more patience with me than I did with them. I know, I know they thought that I was difficult and I thought they were difficult, but they had a lot of patience. And they worked well and they were always upfront and respectful and I appreciate the sincerity that they gave me. You have a good board, you're gonna have an even better board coming on in January. I want to particularly thank the staff at the central office and in the district for all the hard work they have done on behalf of our children. I'd like to thank the staff for being respectful and hardworking and providing us with the information we needed to make relevant decisions for the district. I know at times we didn't think you provided enough and you thought you provided too much, but there has to be a balance there somewhere. Nevertheless, I appreciate your professionalism in dealing with the board and making sure that we were always in tune to what was going on. I sincerely, from the bottom of my heart, thank you all for all of that hard work. Thank you.
And now I'll have Commissioner Powell, who has served probably the longest with Commissioner Thompson, former President Shirley Thompson, present her plaque.
Thank you, Malley. I'll wait till Shirley gets down here. You know, I'm glad I didn't have prepared remarks because Cynthia's introduction to Domingo made me think that, you know, Shirley and I, we didn't always get along either. I bet you never knew that. Because we, and it's true, we didn't always get along. We served as president and vice president together one year. That was enough, okay? But hopefully, we did not project that to the community at all. What we did do together was work extremely hard on a couple of policies. The parent involvement policy, one that there was at least one point where we distinctly disagreed and we were not agreeing to disagree. We struggled with it for two years, a full year in committee and then a full year in the community with community conversations. And then we worked very, very hard on the schools of choice policy, one where we did agree, however, the details of it got us mired to the place where we were talking about it for a year and turned that over to the administration to talk about for a year. So we've tackled what I think together were some of the biggest issues that the district faces. We did it with a spirit of genuine caring about what each other thought and making every effort really to understand each other and make whatever accommodations we really felt that we could make. So with that, Ms. Shirley Thompson, thank you. In grateful recognition and appreciation of the leadership and dedication you provided the Rochester Board of Education from the year 2000 to 2007. Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you, Willa, and thank you to my colleagues. I'm gonna ask you to have a seat because my remarks won't be quite as brief as Domingo's. Yeah, yeah, take a seat, take a load off. Thank you. Ah, dear. Good evening. I heard two people being interviewed together on the radio the other day. I forgot to bring my two shoes with me, but I'll get by. One interviewee sounded pretty quiet compared to the other and it occurred to me that I've been pretty quiet during my tenure when it comes to public comment, both verbal and written. So tonight, I decided that I should share with you everything I haven't said over these past eight years. Does anybody really think I'm serious? Everything? You're all so polite sitting there, oh my gosh. I'm not gonna take that long, but I did have to put my remarks in writing and they're really not too lengthy because I do tend to get teary when it comes to goodbyes and partings. So I'm hoping that this will help me keep that tendency in check. First of all, leaving the school board at this time was not unplanned. When I was elected in 1999, I knew then that I wouldn't do it for more than two terms because I never expected to make this a career. I considered doing just one term, but figured it might take me that long to learn the ropes and I don't know if I have yet, but I said at least one term, but no more than two. Back in 99, I'd been involved with the community and the schools for 16 years since my family's return to Rochester in 1983. And what I initially suspected and what's been confirmed for me at least over these eight years is that the average person with average intelligence can do this job. What I've discovered though is that it takes more than intelligence. It takes more than experience. It takes intelligence, experience, and everybody comes with their own set of experiences and it takes the right personality. In my opinion, only one or two of the qualities will still leave a person coming up short. Now, in terms of my personality, I was born in New York City Harlem Hospital, spent my first 10 years down there going to public schools, PS 186. And as a city girl, I've never really doubted my overall toughness, although in my younger years, I do recall making sure that other people knew how tough I was. But maybe as a result of participating in and living through the civil rights movement with all its heroes, big and small, as a result of the spiritual journey I've taken over my 57 years, and definitely as a result of observing and interfacing with a wide range of people and groups, both close up and personal and from a distance, I've come to try to live a life that embraces learning, works for what's fair, that acknowledges differences, and works in respectful enough a manner so that as we wrestle with the inevitable differences, the door remains open, open enough for us to reach solutions together. And oh yeah, the life I try to lead has to contain a sense of humor. Now, in terms of experience and experiences, I've had some of both. One reason I agreed to run for the board was because I had developed experience in specific areas and I had a bit of life experience under my belt by then. One of the things I love about life is that every single day, every single moment presents us with the chance to open ourselves up to new experiences, to grow from them, and to also bring our life's lessons to bear in any given situation. And I'm real excited about the prospect of new experiences in my after-the-board life. Now, the last attribute, intelligence. Can you pass my bag out to me? There's a book inside my bag under there. You'll see a thick book, if you could just pass that to me. Intelligence. I will readily admit that I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer. I'm a work in progress, always. But I never believed I had to have, thank you, all the answers. No one has them all. One of the roles I felt I could serve on the board was that of a cross-pollinator, sharing with stakeholders on the board and the district and across the community, the ideas and solutions that other stakeholders had already come up with. I'd been around long enough to understand that we really don't have to reinvent the wheel. Well, it's the height of irony that in my last week on this job, after all the trial and error of on-the-job training we go through, that I would be introduced to the writings of John Carver. He's produced the third edition of Boards That Make a Difference, A New Design for Leadership in Nonprofit and Public Organizations. I want you to bear with me while I read a couple of short excerpts from his book. Quote, "In my consulting work with the multitude of boards and chief executives, I have found a great deal of cynicism and resignation. Knowledgeable skeptics think boards can never get beyond being spoon-fed by their executives and that because of their nature, boards must remain fundamentally reactive. With good evidence, many people believe that boards will always stumble from rubber stamping to meddling and back again. They believe the realities of group decision-making forever destined boards to be incompetent groups of competent people. My impressions, too, the authors, are just as dismal, but I believe the cynicism is justified only so long as boards continue to be trapped in an inadequate design of their jobs." Mr. Carver says, "Board members are as conscientious and as giving a group as one could ever hope to find. Members of volunteer boards and underpaid public boards interrupt their personal and occupational lives to support something in which they believe. There's not adequate space," he says in his book, "to give sufficient credit to the works wrought by board members in any given community in one year. The personal drive of board members has accomplished formidable tasks. The perseverance of board members has surmounted seemingly intractable barriers. The patience of board members has outlasted drudgery. The generosity of board members has made the impossible possible." He continues, and I know this will resonate with my colleagues, "Board members arrive at the table with dreams. They have visions and values. In many cases, their fervently held beliefs and sincere desire to make a difference impel them to board membership in the first place. Symphony board members want to improve community culture. City council persons want to include, increase the benefits of citizenship. School board members want to prepare children for life." He continues, "Much as board members and executives unintentionally conspire to water down the powerful work of genuine governance, they often have a nagging awareness that something is not quite right. Concern is often expressed as complaints about time spent on trivial items, time spent reading reams of documents, meetings that run for hours and accomplish little, committees that are window dressing for what staff members want to do, meddling in administration, reactivity rather than proactivity, confusion about what's going on, rubber stamping of staff recommendations." Does it sound familiar? It fits so many school boards and other bodies to a tee. Finally, Mr. Carver says, "In these pages, I argue for dissatisfaction with what we now accept as ordinary and outline a path that boards can follow to become extraordinary. The failures of governance are not a problem of people, but of process. The problems lie squarely in our widely accepted approach to governance, virtually all aspects of the board management partnership. This book is a strong indictment of what is, but it's intended to make a compelling case for what can be." It's the end of his quotes. "I bring this up tonight to say to the board that will be seated in 2008 that you don't have to reinvent the wheel. I know that most of the school board members I've served with and have known feel the words I just read. We have known and people in this community who care about our children and schools have known that they are caring, experienced, intelligent, committed people on our Board of Ed. And this committee wants you to be successful. So my parting gift to each of the 2008 Board of Education members and our incoming superintendent will be their own copy of Boards That Make a Difference. And if all goes as planned, you'll each receive it by next Friday. I believe in you and so do so many other people. Armed with the right tools and the willingness to use them, you can take this school district and this community to the heights that it can attain." Let me begin my thank yous, my list of thank yous, first to the board. Thank you. It has been a challenge, no doubt, but it's also been an enriching experience and one that I'll continue to savor and learn from as I process it. Thanks to Bill Cala. You came in and did what we asked and you're taking your leave, but not without my gratitude. And I can't close without saying thank you to the members of central office who have worked alongside the board to assist me personally and the board collectively. In many cases, I've come to know the superintendent's employees, especially the confidential secretaries, like they were board staff. And once we, once you, get the board administration relationship right, there'll be no stopping this district. I can't say enough about the Board of Education staff. Where are you guys? These are the people... You're busy typing, but I'm also talking about you, Linda, and the other staff. These are the people who have been in the thick of it in many ways. They've worked to help the board carve out a meaningful identity to be effective and efficient. They've been our eyes, ears, and representatives, making us look good and be better when we couldn't do that for ourselves. Thank you. Thank you. And I feel a tremendous amount of gratitude to the community that allowed me to serve for these eight years. The people who emailed and wrote and called me because they believed in my ability to help them. The people who stopped me in the street to talk with me about a decision of mine or to let me know they had voted for me and to keep up the good work. Thank you. And my family. I can't find the words to express my deep love and appreciation for you. My family has supported me from day one in ways that are just too numerous to mention. I can only try to express my appreciation in the quality time and the quantity of time we're going to spend going forward. I need to ask my husband Jim to stand up to just be acknowledged. He has been my rock and my son. He's representing my children and in-laws and grands. My eldest, our eldest, Erin. Thank you. And as much as I'm eager to be with my family, it's gonna be hard to let go of this life. So I've tried to think of ways to kind of ease myself away. I have, we receive our Friday packets in these envelopes and so I'm leaving some addressed with my name. And you don't have to put anything in them, but just send them to me over the next few Fridays. You know, and that will help. We've managed to, somehow the board staff has managed to get everyone's cellphone and they've put my number on speed dial. So when you feel you need to reach out to me, you just hit the speed dial on your cellphone. And unfortunately, I've learned that even former board members aren't allowed to place electronic bugs in the conference room, so that's not gonna happen. But finally, for those of you who want to know what I'm gonna do with all this extra time, let's see, I'm gonna rejoin the community. I live up in the 14621. They call it the hood, the crescent. We're gonna return it to being a neighborhood. I'm gonna... I'm gonna do a lot more karaoke. I have missed it immensely. I'm gonna clean my house more. I'm gonna hang out with my grandkids. I'm gonna return to school. My first two years in college showed me I was not ready for primetime, so 40-something years later, I'll be heading back. I'm gonna do some leisure reading. Did I mention I'm gonna do karaoke? Yeah. And I'm gonna process this experience and I'm gonna thank you again, all, for the role you've had in this journey. Thank you so much.
We have one more thing to do. I would like you to get up and help me give Bill Cala a big thank you for the work he has done with the district. You know, when we were looking for an interim superintendent, it was no easy task. We wanted a Superman. We wanted somebody to come in and do what needed to be done and be willing and able and ready to do it no matter what. And we knew that it was gonna be difficult working for seven people. And we decided that Bill Cala was the man who could do that. I didn't know Bill Cala from a bag of bin, but I came, I've come to respect and admire Bill for his openness, his clarity of vision, his leadership, his ability to work with people of all kinds, all types, the ability to see good in everyone and try to get the goodness out of people. I admire Bill. I have come to admire Bill. I, you know, I always, I'm always looking for people who I would like to be like and I tell my kids, "Don't be like me, Bill. Be like somebody else, somebody that you can admire. And if you admire me, that's fine, but try to find other people that you think you can emulate throughout your lifetime." In any case, we have a plaque for Bill in appreciation for the work he has done and the leadership that he's provided to the district. And he said, "Presented by the Board of Education of the Rochester City School District in appreciation of your service to the students, parents, staff, and community in 2007, December 20, 2007, by the Board of Education." Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much, sir. I wasn't expecting this, so I didn't put anything on paper, Shirley. I want to thank the board, I want to thank all of the community for giving me the opportunity to work for the children in this district. I don't have much more to say than that because it's all about kids and it's all about working for the children and everything that we need to do. And if there only one message that I could possibly leave is that to the new board, to all of the staff here, every move we make, every decision that we make has to be with children in mind and for no other reason. If it doesn't have kids in mind, if it isn't for the benefit of kids, we shouldn't be doing it. So I thank you for giving me this opportunity. I think I got more out of this than you did. So I truly appreciate that. My wife and I, I want to thank my wife for putting up with all this back... Back there, say hello, Joanna. We will be leaving for, back for Kenya on February 10th, and we look forward to that and working with the children over there. We won't, I'll never forget you, and I will leave all of my personal information with everyone so that we can stay in touch. So thank you very much again.
Well, thank you for your indulgence.
President Garcia?
Yes.
I wondered if you can spare a few other minutes for some of us on the Board who may want to also share their love and support of Dr. Kala and well wishes.
Of course, my last day. No, seriously, yes, please go ahead. Commissioner Brennan?
I was gonna do this in the Policy Committee report, but I suppose I can embarrass him now. And Domingo, I know you don't want the meeting to ever end, so if it doesn't adjourn, you stay in power. But, no, first of all, there's no, no two more decent people in this community than Shirley Thompson and Domingo Garcia. And when they leave this Board, we'll be losing an extraordinary measure of experience and integrity and decency. They're remarkable people. Their years of service in this community, their civility, their integrity has been, is going to be difficult to replace, and it will be greatly missed. Now, the Policy Committee actually did not meet last month, has not met since...
Not in reports yet.
Right, so there's, so there's, so as Rob Brown used to say, the Board is, was my predecessor, as Chair of the Policy Committee, he used to say that the Board is fundamentally a policymaking body, and therefore, when the Policy Committee doesn't meet, the harm that can be done to the school district is greatly limited, and the district is safe from it. So that's good news. But there, Dr. Kala has been an unusual assistance to the Policy Committee, and everybody that's interacted with that committee, almost to the point of being ridiculous, has conveyed this. And he's done many good things. His tenure here has been a brief interim tenure, but historic and deeply meaningful to us and to the community. And I think the best thing he did, and he did many good things, was to reach out to people in this community and simply give a listen, simply be accessible, which required an extraordinary amount of energy and patience, and it's a very simple thing, but to give people, to alleviate people's sense of hopelessness and helplessness about whether they even had access to the decision-making process in this district. And on that basis alone, he will never be forgotten by us, and it's just a wonderful thing. Now, Shirley has sort of, has already started out by handing out books, but when I first, my father was a teacher, and when I first decided to run for the school board, some 27 years ago, he, several months before he died, he gave me a book that he said ought to be read by every mayor, every school board member, every school superintendent. And the book was Babbitt by Sinclair Lewis. And he's smiling because I think he recognizes that this is a book about a humorous look at mediocrity and mindless conformity in community leadership. And this is a book that my father gave me shortly before he died, just as I began my long period of school board service over the years. And I would like him to have it as he goes back to Africa, and I want to give this to him right now. I promise to stay on this side of the dais.
I really am. Thank you.
I thought I was going to be able to do this without tears, but if, many of you may know that when Dr. Kala first came on, that I wasn't, I didn't think a white man from the suburbs could come into this district. You know, what did he have to offer the district, was my first thoughts. And what I discovered was a man who loved children. And if you have a love for children, nothing else really matters. He comes with the competence of having run a, been a superintendent in another district, so he comes with a skill set. But even if you have that, if your driving force is not children, you're not going to have the impact. And we all know that Dr. Kala has had that kind of impact. I've been in this community more, 35 years, working on behalf of children and families, particularly in the inner city. I have never seen the kind of outpouring that this community has had for Dr. Kala and for the work that he has done. I remember when I was running for this office, people would say to me, "Good luck. You know, that's a big nut to crack. You know, the issues are insurmountable in the district." Well, when we came, when I came on board, we began to discover they're not so big. And as we continued on this path in the district, we see that things began to get better, they began to get better, questions were starting to be asked. And then we brought on Dr. Kala, who I didn't support. And I'm proud to say that I was wrong, and I thank him. I would say to you, Mrs. Kala, you have someone else that loves him. I appreciate what he's accomplished for this district, for this community. And, you know, as I said to Jean-Claude, you know, he's got a standard to live up to. And, you know, I've got Dr. Kala's number, so, you know, just stand by. So I just, I know your love is for Africa and for Kenya and for the work that you and Mrs. Kala is doing there, but know that our hearts are with you and Mrs. Kala and much success in the work that you're doing in Africa. And I just love you and glad that I've gotten to know you and what you've done for our district. Thank you so very much.
Oh, see, he didn't tell me you were gonna do that. A couple of things. I'll follow Commissioner Brennan's lead. First, there aren't going to be any adequate words that I can express about Domingo and Shirley, except to say that he will be missed, and I hope and pray, although Domingo, you're going a bit a distance away, will have some opportunity to communicate down there. And quite frankly, being the most junior member here, I have not had the opportunity to have the contact that I would have liked to have had with both of you. You both are very strong role models, and different, too, by the way. And I think true leaders learn from other leaders, and I regret that I'm not going to have an opportunity to learn more from the both of you. Bill, it was short, but sweet. Sweet, not so much in terms of what you were able to accomplish internally, because the time you were given was indeed brief, but more significantly, to be quite honest, I think your biggest impact was outside the walls of the school. And I would concur with Commissioner Elliott and Commissioner Brennan that you instilled in the community a belief that leaders can listen first and then lead. Most significantly, I think what can be said about your leadership is, can be summarized in one word, and Commissioner Brennan used this word, accessibility. I think one of the reasons why you are, and I don't think this is an exaggeration, you are so beloved in this community, is, one, to be honest, your tenure was short, and be honest, because with time does come bitterness. But, but more importantly, but more importantly, I think the reason why people care for you and believe for you so much, because you opened doors which were previously perceived to be closed. And when you do that as a leader, that is the most important thing you can do. And I don't say this in any disrespect to Jean-Claude, but if he doesn't, and I suspect he will, don't get me wrong, if he doesn't follow your lead, he will be making a big mistake. You have established some very big shoes. He's a big guy. I'm sure he can fill him. But you have established some very big shoes, and I think we all are the beneficiaries of your leadership. And as I said with Domingo and Shirley, there may have been votes or conversations which people had that make you think, that may have made you think that I personally did not want you around. But Bill, just like I said about Domingo and Shirley, I wish, and I hope, and I pray, I have more of an opportunity to learn from you as time goes on. Godspeed. Thank you very much.
I always struggle with what's appropriate to say and what's not. I did already give my thanks and gratitude to Commissioner Thompson. I honestly can't think of anything to add to it. Domingo, it's been an absolute pleasure. I'm sorry you're going all the way to Florida. Mrs. Garcia, I guess you're probably wise to go all the way to Florida. If I were younger and single, I'd have a crush on him, I have to tell you. See, there, you never know what's appropriate to say until it's already slipped out of your mouth. I don't know what I can add to what's already been said. Dr. Kala, you know that my vote for you was predicated on a commitment to clean house, help us start in a new direction, especially here in Central Office, and that mission was accomplished, and I thank you. And a marvelous thing happened. When it was announced that you were joining us, the community collectively sighed, and they all said, "My God, the school board can actually make a good choice." And then the bloom fell off the rose because folks really didn't believe we could do it twice. And I think that we are starting to see within the community a belief that, yes, our next choice was every bit as good as the first choice. So these are the moments in our career as school boards that vindicate us, I think, and I do thank you for the time that you gave us, most especially because of that sigh that came with your arrival, that opportunity for the community to look at us and say, "They're not a bunch of idiots after all." And, you know, my ego can take that kind of criticism, because sometimes it seems like we deserve it, but the community suffers a great blow when it continually denigrates its school boards, its city councils, its mayors, whatever governing body. And it's been very refreshing to spend a little time on the Board with people giving us the benefit of the doubt, and I appreciate that. That's something that you singularly brought to us.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you again to President Garcia and Commissioner Thompson for their years of service. They will be greatly missed, as I said earlier. To Dr. Kala, one of the most important things of his tenure that I remember most is our Friday morning meetings, and there are always being pretzels, hot balls, and candy on the table. Thank you for bringing that into the conference room on a regular basis. I hope Jean-Claude continues that same, that same tradition. But seriously, thank you for your service. I want to say that I think that this community benefit, has benef, was a direct benefactor of the openness that you brought. And above all, I think you kind of set the stage, laid the groundwork for how a superintendent should be in terms of openness with the Board. I don't think that there was ever any surprises. You made a commitment to us that you would not, that we would never be surprised in terms of an incident. If a kid was hit by a car, we knew about it the same day. If someone tripped and fell down the stairs, we knew about it the same day. And those things may seem like not important items, but Dr. Kala made sure that the Board was informed on even the simplest of things. And that's important because I think you have to have that trust built between a Board and a Superintendent, and I think that he worked to do that with us and made sure that we did not have any surprises. So I thank you for that. Now, you got a week left. I'm hoping that you continue to stick to that, and I hope that we won't have any more surprises, but I greatly appreciate your service. The people of Kenya are really blessed that you have, that you have worked and will continue to work and bring stability there. I'll also be interested to hear how the Kenyan presidential election turns out. I wouldn't be surprised to appoint you Commissioner of Education or something like that.
Thank you, boy.
I didn't know if you were gonna let me speak, but I was gonna ask anyway. I would like to first walk on speaking on behalf of all the students of the district. I would first like to start with Ms. Thompson. When I first came in here this year, I've been working with the district for like the past two years, but this year, I'm actually student representative. But when I first walked in here, I was unfamiliar with the names of all the Board members, but I always knew your name, and you stood out to me, and I'm sure you stood out to a lot of other females and students in the district. You're very well spoken, and we will miss you. I didn't know, no offense to anyone else on the Board, but I didn't, I couldn't remember their names. I knew of Malik Evans because he came to like a career fair, but you stood out to me the most, so thank you. To President Garcia, when I first met you, I was like, "Oh, my God, he is so mean."
See? Somebody else agrees with me.
They don't, they don't. Pops a babes.
But I've learned, well, I've had strict teachers in my past, so I give you the utmost respect for that. So you seem, if you were to be a teacher, you seem like you would have very much control And to Dr. Kala, I met you last year when you came, and, well, this year. But to my school and to everyone in the community, I'm like the news. I have all the news. I'm here every night. I know everything in Central Office. So everyone came up to me, they're running, "What do you think of the superintendent? What kind of guy is he? What do you know about him?" And I described you as presidential.
Ooh.
Not to Bush or anything, nothing to do with Bush.
She is funny, too.
Like a leader, because just the whole dress, and your wife was right by your side, and you both shook my hand, and we hugged, we exchanged hugs, and we exchanged words. I was like, "He's like, he's presidential. He's like the man." People come back to me, and that's the first thing, and I still believe that you're a leader, and for all of you, whoever fills your position, we know who's going to fill your position, but you set high standards. And on behalf of all the students, we thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Board meeting November 29.
So moved.
Is there any corrections to the minutes?
I have a question, President Garcia.
Question, Commissioner Elliott.
I wanted to ask Superintendent Kala about his role on the Governor's Pre-K Committee. Would that stand, President Garcia to Superintendent Kala?
Well, why don't we ask him during his report?
That's fine with me.
Fine, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Have it. We have no speakers addressing agenda items, so we go then to Ms. Commissioner Elliott's question, Dr. Kala, and your report.
Now, do you want to know my future role? Is that...
Yes, that's correct. That's correct.
I'm on the, currently, for those who don't know, I'm on the Governor's Children's Advisory Committee, and I chair a Pre-K Committee. I'm not quite sure what my role will be in the future. I tend to believe that I was appointed to this committee when the thought was that I'd be here for about 30 or 60 days. So the thought is, is that I would continue on this committee because it really is not a function of my being the Superintendent. So I will have a conversation with the Governor's Office next week to see, you know, what So I will have a conversation with the Governor's Office next week to see what they'd like. They're also changing leadership as well. There's, the leadership of the Advisory Committee is moving on, so I think there's going to be some changes. A few other items, for those of you who haven't heard, the University of Rochester has created Rochester's Promise, and this was announced at a press conference that I was able to attend last week. And this is really quite a tremendous event in that the University of Rochester is going to supply, provide $25,000 scholarships to any Rochester City School student who attends the University of Rochester. So we think this is quite a significant event, it's quite a significant financial outlay. One of the things that I said at the press conference was that I hoped that this would be an example to the rest of the colleges in the area to do the same, because it's one thing to have access to the University of Rochester, but it's also another thing to have access to more accessible colleges as well. Well, lo and behold, I had a meeting with Tom Flynn at MCC last week, and he told me that they're working on, with his, with the Monroe Community College Foundation, a very similar plan, which would offer full scholarships to any of our, any of our kids who graduate and go to Monroe Community College. Now, we are the largest feeder of students to Monroe Community College, so this is, this is an enormous, enormous venture, and we're told that the money is there, so this isn't a pipe dream. And in fact, he said, "You know, I'd like you to develop some criteria for entrance, for the students," and this was something that I wasn't going to let go, and I know I only have a few days left, so I made sure that I talked with Marilyn Patterson and Grant, and they put it together very quickly, and he already has the criteria. So we want to make sure that this thing doesn't fall through the cracks. This is pretty exciting. So now we have two major colleges in the area that are doing this, and I think the peer pressure will be very strong for the rest to follow. And this is very important, that the promise to our, our kids need hope, and to remove that big financial burden is just an incredible, incredible thing for our kids. So we're very pleased that that is happening. I was also, had the privilege of being on a panel for the Black Student Union at the University of Rochester this past week, and Malik was on the panel with me along with two Rochester City School students. And it was put on, actually, by graduates, Rochester City graduates who now attend University of Rochester. So it was really a great opportunity. It was total interchange. There were no speeches, and it was an interchange about the good, the bad, and the ugly of Rochester City Schools and what we should do in order to improve from a student's point of view, so we got, we got a lot of good information. Last week as well, several of us attended a meeting at the Peace Baptist Church regarding apprenticeships, and this is also another very important issue in our community as we're approaching a facilities modernization plan that eventually will be $1.2 billion, and it has, this will have an enormous impact on the economics of our community and on the labor force and on employing our own students, and again, providing hope through jobs, through apprenticeships, through vocations. So we've had a lot of conversations in the last six months with labor, and this is, again, one more effort in order to, you know, provide viable occupations for kids when they, when they leave the city schools. I do want to congratulate Amy Zimmer, who is now leaving, she's on, as one of the resolutions as, leaving as a staff member of School 41, but she was on the Biggest Loser, the program, The Biggest Loser, and she lost 126 pounds.
Wow.
So she's a big winner, so we want to congratulate her for that. Thank you. We, I was able to speak at Leadership Rochester last Friday on the state of education in the city of Rochester. Again, I try to make those conversations interactive, and we had a really good conversation with members of the community, members of the Leadership Rochester about, again, what can be done to make the school district a better school district. So that was also very, a very good program. I want to recognize, these people will be voted, will be voted on this evening. I hope, is, I think she's here, is Nyree Strong here today? Nyree Strong will be, is, we're recommending her as the Director of African, African-American Studies, so we want to recognize Nyree in the back there. And also Tony Robinson, who will, is Tony here? Tony will be the program administrator for East High Evening School. Tony, didn't we meet at like 5:00 in the morning? Yeah.
Yes, on Black Friday.
Tony and I were crazy enough to be at Circuit City, waiting to, waiting to get specials, of course, which were like sold out hours before. Did you get anything, Tony?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, okay. Very smart. I came away empty-handed, thank you. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Calla?
Yes, President Garcia. I just want to ask if we can have the administration staff to look into this. There was an email going around with respect to scholarships at Harvard University. Some of you may have seen that, but it was also in the newspaper that the University of Pennsylvania, I believe, or Penn State was also giving similar scholarships for low-income students. Is there a way in which we can develop some kind of relationship with Harvard? And it's either University of Pennsylvania or Penn State that has these scholarships that are available, so that when our kids are ready to go into college, Harvard and either UPenn or Penn State may be an option for our students? If we can look into that?
Sure.
Thank you.
President Garcia?
Commissioner White? Yes. In the series of questions that I asked, I noticed that Resolution 404 was pulled. I have some follow-up questions to that. Should I ask that now or wait until we get to that segment of Resolution? I haven't marked as Resolution 404. No, I don't have the original packet with me. I have my question. What is it about? Oh, it's about special education. I can ask the question. Oh, yeah, 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 no, I'm with you. I know what it is. Okay. President Garcia, would you prefer that I address it now since it's been pulled?
Let's, having addressed that now.
Okay. I noted in my question that I wondered whether there had ever been an evaluation done of the special education system, and if so, what were the results of that study? The answer, and again, as always, I appreciate the hard work of the staff, particularly Kim Dice Fawcett, and Ms. Barclay, who answered this question, but the answer was that in 2005, as part of a blue-ribbon work, the district's special education spending was assessed by the educational management system. Additionally, the district reported there has not been an external evaluation of special education programming, organizational structure, accountability in at least 10 years. During that time, there have been several changes to the special education law in the U.S. and New York State. And I guess my natural follow-up question is, particularly, Dr. Calla, as I know you're sensitive to this issue, and the concessions that have been made during QA, that there is some reason to believe that African-American men have been misdiagnosed, and understanding that you've only been here for a short period of time, why have we not? Do you know why we haven't done an evaluation of our special ed system? No, I asked the same question, that's why I recommended that we have one. There are, and it's really, it's not limited to that alone. I mean, that's, that's one of many, many areas of, that we, of inquiry that we have to look at. It's, it's the distribution of students in the schools, you know, how we place students. It's the, how we are categorizing children across the board, the labels that we're, that we're using with children. Equal access throughout the district. So these are, these are issues that are, you know, compliance issues as well. Compliance issues as well. So all of those absolutely have to be addressed. It's a, and number one, we know it's a serious money issue. And there's also a point that I hear continually, which really does need to be addressed. There's a thought out there that kids are classified in order to get more money, okay? Let me, let me, let me put that one to bed, okay? In order to get money, you have to spend it first, okay? And you don't get it all back. So the thought that, that, you know, we would classify a child in order to get more money is just, is just factually incorrect, because you, you get high-cost aid for the high-cost placements, for these, the restrictive environment placements, but you don't get 100% of it back, so you have to spend that money first, and you get it back later, so you're, you're like floating a loan, too. You're not, you don't get the money back until a year later in some of these cases. So that's, that's an important issue. But that also brings up another issue, is do our kids put in environments that are too restrictive? Are they put in environments that are not restrictive enough? You know, when we look at the violence in our schools and the types, and the suspensions that we have, half of the kids who are suspended are classified children. So that alone would pique the interest to say, "I think we need a study here because this is not right." So there, it's well overdue. Is, Mr. President, just a brief follow-up question. Is one planned, or are you, do you intend on making that suggestion to Mr. Bizard? Now, you see, I had the, I pulled it, that was the review, that was the recommendation for a review, and that organization is experienced in doing urban special education reviews. I had a conversation with Mr. Bizard, and he wants to bring an organization from New York City, and so that's why I pulled that, so that he would be able to, he has to live with us. So he said that he has a recommendation to make, so I would assume at the next board meeting you'll get another, a different recommendation. Thank you, Mr. President.
President Garcia?
Commissioner Thompson?
As a follow-up, Dr. Calla, even though you may not have the whole history of special ed in the district, what explanation did you receive from staff as to why an evaluation has not been performed in so long?
The answer, the answer is basically, we don't know. So it's, it's, it's not, I knew, no one really has an answer as to why these things happen or don't happen. I think one of the reasons why, if I could, I could prognosticate on this, is that the special education in this district has been under review in one way, shape, or form by the state and federal government in a variety of cases, so one would, can't assume that while it's already under review, so, you know, why, why do we need to study it? But there's, there's nothing like a fresh set of eyes to look at things. So when I, you know, come in, I also have a reference point about what special education has looked like in my experience and how it is implemented in my experience. And then I saw how it was done here, and I have some pretty strong ideas about what, how it should be done and how it shouldn't be done, and that immediately sparked the need to say, "Look, we need to, we need to look at this whole thing."
Thank you.
I would just add one thing. I would add one thing, is I, I had, in the last year that I was in Fairport, I did it at Fairport as well. So it's a very troubling issue in all schools, so this is not indigenous to the Rochester City Schools.
Thank you. We'll move on then to board reports. Ms. Washington, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. I am very proud to say that I went to one fundraiser that I have mentioned for the past two meetings, it actually took off today. So today, around 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, we actually distributed the items that we've collected. We've put boxes in about nine schools also in Central Office, and the room was a little bit smaller than this, but it had tons of cabinets and tables, meeting tables, long tables, and it was nothing but clothes, socks, hats, about at least 80 coats, slacks, boots, all sizes. And we had over 75 people come to get things that they needed to help them survive this winter. Many of the families were foreign to the United States, also low-income families who just didn't have it, and, you know, maybe that Christmas money that was going to be spent on a coat, it could be spent on something else now because they walked away with coats, hats, scarves, boots, socks, everything, as you can imagine. People walked away with garbage bags today. So we were very appreciative for that. On behalf of that, we have to thank Alberta Moss, who is the Customer Service Coordinator at the Family Learner Center. That is where we actually held the event. What else is there? We will start our mentoring program with school number 22 for the second year in the middle of February. We have all the student representatives, and we will be mentoring the students with their transition from elementary school to junior high school, and we are still looking forward to our youth conference with the mayor sometime in January.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Commissioner Brennan, you get to say again that you're...
I'm happy to repeat what I said earlier. Thank you. Nothing additional.
President, Garcia, I had a comment about our student reps' report.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Thompson.
I just wanted to say in my last board meeting, Ms. Washington, that you've really been a pleasure to watch and listen to, and you've been a wonderful catalyst for the Student Leadership Council, and I have been very appreciative of the way you've represented students, so thank you for your service.
You're not going to forget that name, I'm sure. President Garcia, the Board Governance Committee met on December, Monday, December 17th, and we discussed, well, we met a couple of times, actually, I should say. We met to evaluate the board staff. There's going to be a resolution that comes forth as a result of a meeting about, as a result of the evaluations of board staff. We also are still collecting some of the board's self-evaluations. I'm trusting President Garcia that we will have your evaluation. Before you leave, President Garcia, or I take everything back I said about you. We also talked, wanted to get a legal opinion on the appointment of board staff. In other words, what that meant was, do we officially via resolution have to appoint our board staff? And the find is word that we do have to legally appoint board staff, and that we'll have those resolutions to come forth at a, at a later meeting. We also got a legal opinion on board staff inclusion in the superintendent's employee group. We requested the following items, the, an appointment table with the start dates and salaries for all the board staff, and there's going to be a forthcoming, and to recommend it to be under new business, a resolution in reference to a staffing issue. We want to, I just want to publicly thank the board staff who met with us and who were evaluated, and we indicated to them in those staff sessions is that this was all new to us, so that we want their feedback as well into the process, so that we can improve what we're doing as evaluators of our staff. Many of us do not come with that skill set, so we're looking at having a consultant to help us with, with that, but also to get feedback from our staff in terms of, you know, how best to do it, what tools to use, and what have you. The next meeting is going to be determined, but let me also publicly thank my colleagues who served with me on this committee, Commissioners Powell and Commissioners White. I certainly appreciate the work that they have contributed to this, to this committee. President, Commissioner Powell has always... Commissioner Powell has always brought historical information for us that Commissioners, Commissioner White and I don't have, so that's been very, very appreciated. And Commissioner White always is the balanced viewpoint person, if you will, you know, to have us to think about things from different angles. So, I certainly do appreciate their support and involvement on the Board Governance Committees. So, thank you very much.
President Garcia, if I could just comment on the report?
Yes, please.
It's your last meeting. Come on now. I did want to, at the risk of this sounding like a love fest, I do think it's important to recognize the good work of that committee. We are often criticized as a board for not getting things done. Clearly, under Commissioner Elliott's leadership, we have had significant improvements. When I came here, there was no orderly process for accepting questions, when those questions would be responded to. There was a significant, there was a very short period of time in which we had to review that infamous Friday package as a result of governance. That changed. We now have two weeks to look at that packet. Additionally, when I came here, actually, long before I came here, there was no review of employees, district, board staff employees. One, somebody said. That came out of governance. Commissioner Elliott and the rest of that committee poured through some ideas about evaluations. So, you know, not so much a reflection on Commissioner Elliott, but again, sort of being protective of the institution, we have to recognize what we do well. And there have been significant improvements in the governance of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Elliott deserves credit for that.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Powell?
What about me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not asleep yet.
Commissioner Evans, I'm sorry.
No report, brief report. Often, the board is often criticized for different things, sometimes not being open. But the board received an award on behalf of Rochester Community Television last Monday. And I will give this to the board clerk to hang near the board office, and it reads, Rochester Community Television 2007, Community Producer Award. The Rochester City School District Board of Education in recognition of your outstanding efforts to promote open government and community media. As you know, we are an elected body that decided to go primetime. This is the best reality show going. And we got, and we've, we're recognized for our great productions through community television. So, thank you, staff, board staff, thank you, Tom Petronio, thank you, Channel 15, for putting us on there. And guess what? It may not make big news, but City Council is going to start going live in January. So, we set a precedent that other elected bodies are picking up, ladies and gentlemen. And we got this award, and all, every, all six of you should be proud for voting for that because that was unanimous vote to go live and be televised. So, congratulations to the Board of Education, and I'll give this award to the clerk to hang. No, that's all I have, Mr. President. Thanks.
Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. I have two reports. The first is a Finance Committee report. The committee met on the Thursday, the 13th, to review the financial reports and resolutions 379 through 388 and Resolution 412. At this time, I move that the board receive the financial reports.
So moved.
Second?
Is there a second? Has been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Okay, thank you. Resolutions 379 through 381 are reference facilities, and they come with the committee's recommendations. Resolutions 382, 383, and 385 are procurement and supply resolutions, which also have the committee's endorsement. Resolutions 384, 386, 387, 388 are being advanced without recommendation one way or another. And my records don't, and don't tell me whether Resolution 412 was approved or advanced without recommendation by the committee, but that is also an item that went through the Finance Committee. The next scheduled, we did put a Finance Committee on the schedule for Thursday, January 17th. Of course, the new chair of the committee after our organizational meeting will certainly have the prerogative to change that if need be. But it's tentatively scheduled for January 17th at 5:30 PM. My second report is to close out our Ad-Hoc Committee on Parent-Preference Managed Choice. The committee met three consecutive months. Our last meeting was on Tuesday, the 18th. And we have the following recommendations, and that was ultimately the goal of the Ad-Hoc Committee. The first recommendation is that two particular points be referred to the Policy Committee, the first being to include zone improvement team language in that managed choice policy, the second to remove transition year language. President Garcia, did it is your prerogative to direct?
I will, yes, I will have those items directed to the Policy Committee.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next recommendation, when justification for that, just for the audience, is that zone improvement teams had always been envisioned as part of the policy, and it was something of an oversight when the policy did get adopted, that it was not a part of the language of the original policy. With regard to the transition year language, obviously, it is now extraneous. The transition years are long past, and we simply don't need it taking up space in our manual anymore. The next recommendation is that the superintendent complete an evaluation of the implementation of this policy, using either an inside or an outside evaluation team, and that the superintendent submit an outline of how this evaluation might be completed to the Quality Assurance Committee when it meets in January 2008. The administration staff essentially said, "We know what data we have. We know what data you need." And they suggested it was the board's role to determine whether it be evaluated by an internal or external evaluation team. It was the opinion of the Ad-Hoc Committee that, no, it was, it was very securely in the role of the superintendent to make a recommendation to the board how it wanted this evaluation to take place, internal or external, and by what consulting firm. So, we simply ask that the superintendent be directed to formulate a course of action or several courses of action to be taken to the Quality Assurance for final approval.
If there's no objection, we shall direct the superintendent?
Thank you. The last recommendation, and it really is only food for thought, is, because it was not part of the charge of the committee, the secondary school choice process has, was never under the purview of managed choice. We have always had secondary choice, but it has never been governed by a policy. So, the committee strongly encourages and urges that the superintendent look at the choice process as it considers any plans to improve the performance of our secondary schools. And the data in other districts show that school choice process can have an impact on student achievement. So, sort of a non-binding recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, President Garcia. I think I can get through QA without crying, because between Cynthia and me, we're going to start this reputation of black women and crying and comments and all that kind of stuff, so. Quality Assurance met on December 20th. After reviewing the Frederick Douglass closing plan and the Professional Development Plan for 2007 to 2010, the committee voted to recommend approval by the full board for both. The board was provided with these materials, and additional copies are at your seat tonight, and we'll get to my request for a vote in a moment. Regarding the Douglass closing, on the superintendent's recommendation, the board approved a plan on April 19th to close Douglass completely, effective June 2007. Two existing schools, the Northeast and Northwest College Preparatory Schools, removed intact into the building that was Douglass. Parent information meetings were held in May on evenings, afternoons, and a weekend, and the then-Douglass principal, Vicky Ramos, said that she and other administrators and counselors reached out extensively to parents regarding the process in writing, by phone, by email. Committee discussion focused on parent involvement slash engagement. The outreach efforts of Ms. Ramos and her staff were laudable, and we appreciated the information because of the ongoing questions we steadily received regarding how accessible district schools are to parents. I move that the board approve the Frederick Douglass closing plan forwarded by the administration. Yes?
Second. Has been moved the second. Any questions regarding the plan? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, savant.
Thank you. Professional development. The district's Professional Development Plan for 2007 to 2010 must be submitted to the State Education Department and requires board approval. The plan delineates how professional development is aligned with content and student performance standards, designed to demonstrate how classroom instruction, class, teacher, practice will be improved and assessed, and is structured so that teachers have the opportunity to complete at least 175 hours of professional development every five years. We emphasize to administrators that follow-up is critical to ensure that skills learned in professional development translate into the classroom and into student achievement. We asked about professional development for paraprofessionals and Bente employees. Chief of Diversity and Leadership, Michelle Hancock, said her department is taking on that task, and that professional development will be developed for these groups. I make a motion that the board approve the Professional Development Plan for 2007, 2010.
Is there a second?
Second.
In second, any questions? Hearing none, or in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The aye savant?
Finally, the SUR reports. The committee did not vote to forward the schools' under-registration review reports to the full board for approval. Reports were provided for the International Finance Career High School at Franklin, Jefferson High School, and Monroe High School. The plans must be submitted to the State Education Department. The SUR plans for each school were written by teacher slash administrator teams with input from parents. The improvements focus on literacy, math, school climate, student behavior, and graduation rates. Remedies include professional development, specialized programs for students, student materials, and technology. Parent engagement, or the lack thereof, is a recurring theme. Principals can assist the board by providing written evidence, even if it's anecdotal, regarding their efforts to engage parents. Concern about parent engagement is not what prevented the QA committee from forwarding the plan to the full board for approval. However, a large binder of information was provided to the committee for its review by administration two days before the meeting. And we understand that slowness on the part of the state was one factor in our untimely receipt of the information. But in the absence of Commissioner White, and with respect to the volume of information provided, we determined that approval of the SUR plan should wait until January 2008 or later. Even though school board approval is required, the three schools began improvement activities at the beginning of this school year, so the lack of board approval isn't holding up work that each school committee and the superintendent felt was important. That concludes my last QA report. I want to just pause and say thank you to the folks who have been involved with Quality Assurance over the years. We've had a different composition from time to time of the folks who are here on the dais. Willa has served on QA with me, Cynthia Elliott, Van White is currently on it, Commissioner Brennan now serves on it. I think we can agree that we've probably had some of the longest meetings at QA. I think I mentioned long meetings in my remarks earlier. But they haven't been without substance, and that certainly was one of the meetings where any member of the board or community could sit in and really get some insight into the workings of, and the rationale and the background of many of our programs and services. So, we won't generalize about long meetings. They can be helpful. And I also want to thank the staff that supported QA, again, over the years. Those people have changed, but Jana Carlisle has served as the administration staff to QA, Cheryl Holloway, Kim Dice Fawcett. And we've had a number of members from the administration come before QA and provide valuable information, and I thank you for that. And last but not least, I have to thank Linda Dunsmore. She and I have sat through many a breakfast at The Penguin, where she's come forward and deciphered what we've covered a few days before and made sense out of it so that it was presentable to the board, and I thank you for that, Linda. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner White?
Yes, the Audit Committee met on Monday, December 17th at 5:30 PM. All board members were invited to attend. During the meeting, we received the 2006, 2007 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, commonly referred to as the CAFR. We also met with our independent auditor, Deloitte and Touche, on the results of our audit. The committee is seeking support from the board to accept the adoption of Resolution 413, which we will discuss and vote on later. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Any questions? Hearing none, we move on to consideration of resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 356 to 378. Is there a second?
Moved.
Is there a move?
So moved.
Has been moved. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Brennan. Questions on any resolutions? Commissioner White?
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution number 372, I submitted a question. Again, I thank the staff for responding. This is a resolution that dealt with a behavior modification program that apparently was previously used in Douglas. The answer that I got back was, we had this program at Douglas, and the success rate was documented to be successful in avoiding repeated suspensions. I do not have a track record for Monroe because it's just starting there. Again, Mr. President, my question was, we're using this program in Monroe, and the answer was, we're using it because it was successful at Douglas. It had a successful track record that was documented, but my question, my natural follow-up question is, well, what was a success at Douglas? The answer just says, well, we had a success rate that was documented at Douglas. But I, you know, obviously, I'm looking, obviously, this was an issue of best practices, and I, the logical answer for me would have been, well, this was why it was successful at Douglas, and I didn't get that in the answer.
There was no time between questions here to get a response?
I think today you asked the follow-up question.
Oh, no, I asked the follow-up question, I think, yesterday or the day before. But let me be clear. The question was, what was the assessment of this model? And the answer came back, it was successful at Douglas. It didn't, there was really no answer.
Well, that's what follow-up questions are for, and we did get the follow-up question today. And we got the question today.
Well, just fine.
I'm just, I'm trying to make the point. It's fine. I understand your question and the answer not fulfilling the requirement that you wanted. But the fact of the matter, we will get you that information. We made contact with Vicky Ramos, and Vicky Ramos was out of her office and was, she didn't have the data in front of her, but she did provide an anecdotal answer that, in addition to that, that she could provide off the cuff. But we can provide that for you.
Don't get me wrong. I appreciate the fact that everybody is busy and their schedules. I merely wanted to make clear that in assessing the question and answer, that when we ask questions like this, it's clear the answer that we need.
It's our responsibility to ask follow-up questions-
Well, Mr. President, so it's clear for-
Excuse me, Commissioner, I'm responding to your comment. So that within a period of time that is reasonable, the staff has enough time to respond.
Well, let me just say, Mr. President, I submitted this question in a timely fashion. I asked a reasonable follow-up question, which, again, I would respectfully submit, I shouldn't have even had to ask, but I did, and I've been given an answer, that it may take some time to get an additional answer. I'm not pointing fingers.
Well, and the point I'm making that if we didn't answer your question, there were two weeks.
No, there wasn't, Mr. President. This was a shorter timeframe. We didn't, because we're having the meeting earlier, I guess because of the holiday season, we weren't given the normal timeframe that I referred to earlier on. So, you know, no one's pointing fingers. I just, I wanted to know if we had an answer, and I've learned, Mr. President, we do not at this time. I can, I'll wait for the answer.
Any other questions regarding these resolutions? All in favor of approving a resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I have some noes.
Go ahead.
357, 362, 372, 373, 374, 375.
And I vote aye, I don't know, the ayes have it. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 379 through 381.
So moved.
Is it moved? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any questions regarding those resolutions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 382 through 385.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Commissioner Elliott?
386, 387, 388.
Okay. Fine, you voted on all of them. You got that vote? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 386 through 388. It's our information technology. Anybody move those?
So moved. Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Commissioner Elliott?
386, 387, 388.
Okay. Fine, you voted on all of them. You got that vote? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 389 through 414.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I have some noes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Elliott.
399, 400, 401, 410.
Ms. Dunsmore, you got those? Thank you. That does the resolution. We have non-finished business, so we move on to new business. There's no new business, so-
Yeah, there is. Just clarification, did we, so there was, let me just ask this, did we just approve 411? President Garcia, was that a part of?
Yes, we approved Resolution 389 through 414.
Can I, can I ask a question about 411?
It's already passed.
All right.
Thank you.
There is new business.
Go ahead.
There is. President Garcia, I'm interested in, for your consideration, introducing a resolution in reference to an employee matter, in an employee matter, a board staff-employee matter. So I'd make that motion that we take care of this under new business. It is in reference to compensation of an employee, so I'd make a motion to accept-
You'll have the resolutions in front of you. Is there a second to that resolution?
Second.
It's been properly done second?
Yes.
If there are no questions, we'll move to approve it. If there are questions, then we'll have to have an executive session set up for next month.
Which resolution are we referring to?
It's the res-
Okay, I think I have it.
Yes, it's right, it's in front of you. Hearing none.
Yeah, there will be some questions.
Well, then, this motion-
So we need to-
We table.
Either a motion to go into executive session or a motion to table one or the other.
I'll entertain a motion to table the resolution until the next regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
No, I'm entertaining a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been moved in second. There's no discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Two noes. The ayes have it.
Three noes, excuse me.
Three noes.
The ayes still have it?
Yes.
Okay. So we move on to speakers, in order than agenda items. I'll remind the speakers, you have three minutes. When the bell sounds, please conclude and walk off the podium and allow the next person to have their three minutes. If you follow the rules, you will not be interrupted and will be treated with respect, as usual. You have the clock.
I beg your pardon, I just have a point of order.
Point of order.
The motion to table, my understanding was that Cynthia Elliott seconded it. There was no motion because the board president cannot move.
No, no. She made the motion, Commissioner Thompson seconded it.
Oh, you seconded it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I needed. You know me, I get hung up on process.
I know, I know you. No problem.
At first you seconded.
The first speaker we have is Mr. Charlie Richardson, followed by Ms. Lovely Warren.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Officer Carter of Neighborhood and Public Neighbors. I'm going to get a copy of the Street 14607. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak together. I'd like to just ask a question. Does anybody have the idea of similarities of Mr. Garcia and also City Council President Beck? I'm the only one that's ever been removed from a meeting for more than three minutes. I will not doubt it. But I would like to congratulate Mrs. Washington in how she represented her position on the school board at last night's community meeting. She spoke like I've been trying to speak for the book. She's for the youth, and I'll tell you, there's some things there that Ms. Powell, thank you for agreeing last night, you thought about some things. Mr. Garcia, I'll never forget that, but it's okay. I forgive him. Mrs. Thompson, you're not going to retire. You've got a job of finding out where the books are. The students are still saying, is that correct, Mrs. Washington?
Yeah.
They still don't have books in their classroom in high school. Dr. Kawa, I'm sorry to inform you that your flight in February is going to cancel. We're going to ask you to be the superintendent of a brand-new alternative education school. We're going to be opening in Rochester and also the Rush Campus. I would hope very much that the Board of Education would back this if ever, given our 16, 30-year-olds that have dropped out of school and made mistakes, and now wish they could get back in school, but they cannot go back to the regular school. We want them to get their GED, if they knew we could guarantee them jobs. Do this initiative of $1.2 billion being spent by the school district next year. We want to train these young people. Okay, they have those jobs, work with the union to that. While they're remodeling 690 St. Paul Street, this is empty. The school is there, the youth are there, getting them back trained so that they can handle a livelihood. We want to turn that entire area, Upper Falls Boulevard, St. Paul Street, Clifford, Clifford over to Clinton, and back up front in our route. The police are doing a really good job of getting the crime out of there. There's still some work to do. The citizens are going to finish it off. But the entire area is in shambles. In the city of Rochester, who we're going to be addressing also owns a lot of that property. It can be rehabbed. These young people can learn how to rehab homes instead of living, letting the test accompany them. The other mention I've heard in the community, and I have over the last 38 months, talked to now over 8,000 people, okay? Your comment to the newspaper was inappropriate, according to people that you represent in the city. And again, that hurts the community a lot, especially our young people.
Please don't include Mr. Richardson.
What I ask you to do is, please listen, Mrs. Washington, whoever that representative may be. Dr. Kawa, God bless you, you never wanted to leave the airport, but we're glad you came here, and it's God they do. And please stay in touch, we need you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our city council person, Ms. Lovely Warren.
Today I'm not here to speak, I'm standing here, waiting to hear everything. I believe that he's there, one of us, at the same time, as he can actually manage his own. However, last month, as I was eating dinner, I heard on the news one of the most derogatory statements from one of our, from one of your members. I was truly offended. It reminded me of a time when Bob Lonsberry caught former Mayor Bill Johnson a monkey. For centuries, the word "buffoon," when referring to African-Americans, was likened to calling them a nigger or a monkey. It is a word that slave owners used to degrade and to hurt. It is a word that was used to refer to white actors in the 1900s that painted their face black and danced around the stage like idiots, mocking black people. To hear this word used to refer to another human being is unacceptable, and I believe that Ms. Powell owes this community an apology. It is okay to disagree with someone or to criticize another's behavior. However, it is not okay to destroy their character or to demean them. The fact is that instead of going over to Wilson Magnet where I attended school and asking many who has been a century there for many years, for more than 20 years, how much she makes, you chose to degrade another individual. You are trying to compare apples to oranges when you compare today's clerk typists and paraprofessionals to secretaries that have been around for more than 20 years. Before you step out to say she is wrong, compare the paycheck of many a century who has been around for 20-plus years and it trenches with the students, a mother, a grandmother to those students that have none, to the paychecks of those secretaries that have been around for 20 years. That is where the discrepancy lies. However, sometimes, we are so busy trying to shoot the messenger that we miss the message. Instead of responding to another commissioner's actions in the media, why don't you respond to the fact that 70% of our students aren't graduating? Respond to those students from teen empowerment that spoke at the Zero Tolerance Meeting with Ms. Washington yesterday, that said they don't have books and they feel like some teachers, not all teachers, some teachers are not educating them. Write them a letter explaining to them the reasons why you feel like they are getting a great education when they feel like they're getting a second-rate education. That is what, what they stood up and told us in this community from their mouths. We, and I include myself in this, have to focus-
Please conclude, Ms. Warren.
I will. We have to focus on our job, and I include myself, because our children have spoken. I heard them. Did you?
Mr. Ron Ring? Gloria Winston Arzag?
She's here.
She is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't really do this anymore, but I had to come out of retirement to address what I heard from this last board meeting, and all I can say is, well, how quickly we forget, how quickly we forget where we come from. Much has been said in this community about name-calling, and again, the former mayor being called an orangutan, and I think Imus even got fired for the derogatory statements that he made. Gina Six is a symbol today of how tired black people are of being called names. I'm not here to defend Cynthia. She's a woman and can handle her own, but because your letter went publicly with a word in it referring to her as a buffoon, I think you should be fired or retired. That's what I think. I did not vote for you. I think Howard Eagle should be sitting in your seat, because I know one thing about him, he's a little bit more culturally sensitive to what comes out of his mouth or is put on a piece of paper that hurts people. And I'm not one of those people that sweeps things under the rug anymore. I used to play that game, but I'm 62 now, and for me to come here and be here tonight because your words in that letter left me in pain, even though it wasn't directed at me personally, we've just had enough of that. I've had enough of it, and I wanted to come tonight publicly to say, I think you owe Cynthia Elliott an apology, and I think it should be public since your words went public. But I understand politics, and I understand why that letter had to go to the union, the people that helped support you. I understand you have political aspirations, and whatever your next step is, you want their support, but why aren't you outraged about the graduation rate that you sit here and represent for 10 years? Why aren't you outraged about our babies dying out there in that street because they can't read or write? Why aren't you outraged about the employers leaving this community because we cannot produce a workforce for them anymore? I grew up here. I was educated in the city school district when the teachers were teaching, okay? So I know what I'm talking about. If you're concerned and you're outraged and you want to write about something, write about that. In conclusion, the only thing I have to say is, it's not always the cream that rises to the top, Willa. Sometimes it's scum.
Mr. James Thompson?
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Commissioner Kawa, I came to talk about my wife, Shirley Thompson. I want to just indulge myself for a couple of minutes, three minutes, and speaking as a family member, my son Aaron, rest of the family, a member of the community, I've kept my mouth shut over the past eight years, haven't talked a whole lot, and I ask Shirley questions, and she says, well, that's confidential, so I don't know what's going on anyway. But Shirley started many years ago trying to work to get the parents involved through various groups in the community, and I want her to continue that. So I want you to know that she's not going to stop. I wouldn't be able to stop her anyway. She's approached to run for the board years before she started, but before she actually ran, but then the kids were probably not quite ready for her to do that, so now life changes. We go through different phases. It took courage, it takes courage for all you board members to do what you do, to step out and say what you say, and you're going to get criticized, as we can see, for saying things. One thing Shirley has stood for in her years on the board has been for people to try to listen to each other, and I think that's very important. Even though she's often been in an uphill battle and been a lone voter against or for something, she's stood her ground, but with decorum, and I hope that other board members will take that to heart. You know, there's a movement, as you know, among some people to get rid of the board. They have the board run by the mayor, and I think it's only when board members work together, as from what I've seen, that's what Shirley wants the most, for people to work together on the board, to put aside their differences and work for children, that the board will get somewhere, and that danger of having the board co-opted by various forces won't happen. People need to actually play the roles they play, so when someone calls and asks for something, when a parent calls and asks to have a certain service, I notice that Shirley will tell them, well, go talk to your principal, or go talk to this person, and follow the prescribed routes. One should be able to do this, and the board needs to make it clear, it needs to funnel a way for people to actually do what they need to do, and that we don't feel that there's a bureaucracy stopping us at every point in our way. So I hope you'll take that to heart. That's what I see as one of Shirley's, I don't want to speak for her, obviously, that's what I see as one of the things that she wants to do. The board can achieve, and thank you- You are trying to compare apples to oranges when you compare today's clerk typists and paraprofessionals to secretaries that have been around for more than 20 years. Before you step out to say she is wrong, compare the paycheck of many, a century, who has been around for 20-plus years and intrenches with the students, a mother, a grandmother to those students that have none, to the paychecks of those secretaries that have been around for 20 years. That is where the discrepancy lies. However, sometimes, we are so busy trying to shoot the messenger that we miss the message. Instead of responding to another commissioner's actions in the media, why don't you respond to the fact that 70% of our students aren't graduating? Respond to those students from teen empowerment that spoke at the Zero Tolerance Meeting with Ms. Washington yesterday, that said they don't have books and they feel like some teachers, not all teachers, some teachers are not educating them. Write them a letter explaining to them the reasons why you feel like they are getting a great education when they feel like they're getting a second-rate education. That is what they stood up and told us in this community from their mouths. We, and I include myself in this, have to focus-
Please conclude, Ms. Warren.
I will. We have to focus on our job, and I include myself, because our children have spoken. I heard them. Did you?
Gloria Winston Arzag.
She's here.
She is here.
Good evening.
I don't really do this anymore, but I had to come out of retirement to address what I heard from this last board meeting. And all I can say is, well, how quickly we forget. How quickly we forget where we come from. Much has been said in this community about name-calling, and again, the former mayor being called orangutan. And I think Imus even got fired for the derogatory statements that he made. Gina Six is a symbol today of how tired black people are of being called names. I'm not here to defend Cynthia. She's a woman and can handle her own. But because your letter went publicly with a word in it referring to her as a buffoon, I think you should be fired or retired. That's what I think. I did not vote for you. I think Howard Eagle should be sitting in your seat. Because I know one thing about him, he's a little bit more culturally sensitive to what comes out of his mouth or is put on a piece of paper that hurts people. And I'm not one of those people that sweeps things under the rug anymore. I used to play that game, but I'm 62 now. And for me to come here and be here tonight because your words in that letter left me in pain, even though it wasn't directed at me personally, we've just had enough of that. I've had enough of it. And I wanted to come tonight publicly to say, I think you owe Cynthia Elliott an apology, and I think it should be public since your words went public. But I understand politics, and I understand why that letter had to go to the union, the people that helped support you. I understand you have political aspirations, and whatever your next step is, you want their support. But why aren't you outraged about the graduation rate that you sit here and represent for 10 years? Why aren't you outraged about our babies dying out there in that street because they can't read or write? Why aren't you outraged about the employers leaving this community because we cannot produce a workforce for them anymore? I grew up here. I was educated in the City School District when the teachers were teaching. Okay? So I know what I'm talking about. If you're concerned and you're outraged and you want to write about something, write about that. In conclusion, the only thing I have to say is, it's not always the cream that rises to the top, Willa. Sometimes it's scum.
Mr. James Thompson.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Commissioner Calhoun, I came to talk about my wife, Shirley Thompson. Time to introduce the mood. I want to just indulge myself for a couple of minutes, three minutes. And speaking as a family member, for my son Aaron, rest of the family, a member of the community, I've kept my mouth shut over the past eight years, haven't talked a whole lot. And then I ask Shirley questions, and she says, well, that's confidential, so I don't know what's going on anyway. But Shirley started many years ago trying to work to get the parents involved through various groups in the community, and I want her to continue that. So I want you to know that she's not going to stop. I wouldn't be able to stop her anyway. She's approached to run for the board years before she started, but before she actually ran, but then the kids were probably not quite ready for her to do that, so. Now life changes. We go through different phases. It took courage. It takes courage for all you board members to do what you do, to step out and say what you say, and you're going to get criticized, as we can see, for saying things. One thing Shirley has stood for in her years on the board has been for people to try to listen to each other, and I think that's very important. Even though she's often been in an uphill battle and been a lone voter against or for something, she's stood her ground, but with decorum, and I hope that other board members will take that to heart. You know, there's a movement, as you know, among some people to get rid of the board. They have the board run by the mayor, and I think it's only when board members work together, as from what I've seen, that's what Shirley wants the most, for people to work together on the board, to put aside their differences and work for children, that the board will get somewhere, and that danger of having the board co-opted by various forces won't happen. People need to actually play the roles they play. So when someone calls and asks for something, when a parent calls and asks to have a certain service, I notice that Shirley will tell them, well, go talk to your principal, or go talk to this person, and follow the prescribed routes. One should be able to do this, and the board needs to make it clear, needs to funnel a way for people to actually do what they need to do, and that we don't feel that there's a bureaucracy stopping us at every point in our way. So I hope you'll take that to heart. That's what I see as one of Shirley's, I don't want to speak for her, obviously. That's what I see as one of the things that she wants to do. The board can achieve, and thank you, Superintendent Calhoun. Thank you, Domingo Garcia, and thank you, all of you board members, for your courage, and let's fly together and make Rochester a wonderful, continue, a more wonderful place. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker for tonight is Mr. Adam Wilbansky. Dr. Wilbansky, is he here? No, he's not. So that concludes the list of speakers.
President-
I would like, yes, Commissioner Elliott?
Yes, I just wanted to, I was remiss in my comments for, with, for Dr. Calhoun. I'd already expressed my comments for President Garcia, but also want to express my comments for Commissioner Thompson. I was remiss in that, and I do apologize for that upfront, but I do appreciate your leadership for the Quality Assurance Committee. You know, sometimes I can go off in there. You, you know, provide the leadership to make sure that the meeting is running smoothly. You know, that's my passion that comes out. And so you were, your leadership wanted to, for all, for us to, each one of us to hear the other, and I really do appreciate that, and thank you so very much. And, you know, hope that you will be in some capacity involved in this community, because this community certainly does need more people to be involved in the workings of this community, and particularly in the 146-21 community. So I thank you so very much for the efforts that you've given us on the board. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
President Garcia, point of personal privilege?
Commissioner Power.
Some things don't need a, one to have call attention to it, but I will, unfortunately, both of the speakers have left, I'd like the audience to take note that I remained in my seat at all times.
The next organizational meeting, well, the 2008 organizational meeting of the board would be January 2nd, when the new board members will be sworn in, also the new officers of the board will be elected, as well as all committee chairs. And the regular business meeting will be on January 24 at 6:30 PM here. If you like additional information, please see the web pages at the City School District. If, or you can call if you'd like to speak at the next regular board meeting. You call this City School District and ask, we put on the list. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
I immediately next to that, wrote her response, working in the, the references of one of the television programs. The reference is-
It got there, it hit the newspaper.
All right. We'll see you next year.
She said, yeah.
And it was, it hit the, it hit the, uh, table.